Hey, thanks for joining us. We have an extension from our legal and personnel committee tonight, a special presentation. So I'm just going to turn things over to trustee Davis Ford.
Thank you. I'm very excited about the opportunity for the Board of Trustees to get some critical information on the Affordable Care Act. There's a next stage of implementation that is kicking off on October the first. And also, this is an opportunity for us to be able to be informed, to talk to our residents and constituents, and also for those who are watching or here, to get firsthand information and an opportunity to ask questions. So with that said, I'm going to bring to the mic Dennis Gonzalez. Mr. Gonzalez is the executive officer responsible for Region Two. He's from the Department of Health and Human Services in Region Two, encompasses New York, New Jersey, Puerto Rico, and Virginia. I'd like to welcome you and thank you for coming here to share some important information with us.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Mr. President, trustees, I very much appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and I want to give special thanks to trustee Davis for arranging this presentation. I am the, as was mentioned, I'm the executive officer of HHS, so I am also the lead for the Affordable Care Act in New Jersey. You may be familiar, and I'll use this term once, I'm allowed to use it once as a point of reference, and I'm going to do that now. You may be familiar with the other term for the Affordable Care Act, which is Obamacare. And so I am responsible for implementing it in New Jersey. I have been all over the state. It seems I have met with at least a million people. This morning, I was in Atlantic City. I'm here tonight. Tomorrow morning, I'm in Princeton. Tomorrow night, I'm in Wayne. And the rest of this week, I have a number of different activities and events and presentations. So I appreciate this opportunity to be here tonight. Let me very quickly start by just giving you an overview of the Affordable Care Act. The Affordable Care Act was signed by President Obama on March 23rd, 2010, so little over three and a half years ago. And the ACA was passed by Congress and signed by President Obama for three main reasons, three overarching goals: to make health care affordable, to make it accessible, and to protect the consumer. Now, I'm going to go over in a little bit how we make it affordable and how we make it accessible, but let me just very quickly go over some of the protections, consumer protections. So if you see, if you look on this slide, I have a number of protections listed. These are just a few examples of the many protections in the Affordable Care Act for consumers. The first two were actually the first two to be implemented. The first provisions of the Affordable Care Act went into effect six months after it was signed, on September 23rd, 2010. And they were these first two: to prevent children 19 or younger who have pre-existing conditions from being denied coverage, and to allow the adults, young adults up to the age of 26, to be on their parents' insurance. I can't tell you how many presentations I've done, and I've been approached by people telling me that if they get nothing else out of the Affordable Care Act, at least those two things, they really appreciate that they're able to get coverage for their children who have pre-existing condition, or are able to keep their children on their health plan. I also want to highlight what we call the 80/20 rule, number four there. Every insurance company now has to take 80 percent of your premiums, premiums paid for by you as a subscriber, and put that back into direct services and to improvement to care. And if they don't, then they have to provide a rebate to the consumer, to the member. And in New Jersey alone, and this is why I like to highlight this one, in New Jersey alone, since this provision went into effect, which was about two and a half years ago, over $10 million have been returned to New Jersey consumers because of this 80/20 rule. Okay, so now we go into how we make it affordable. Starting next year, you may be familiar with the term individual mandate. Every American must have health insurance, starting next year. Now, either you get it through your employer, which is how most Americans get their insurance, or you get it through Medicare, or Medicaid, or if you're a veteran, you get it through the VA health system. Or if you don't, if you can't get it from any of these sources, then the marketplace is where you can get health insurance, where you can afford health insurance. For those who can't afford it, this is where you can get it and afford it, and meet that provision of the law, that individual mandate provision within the law. So this is how we make it accessible. The marketplace is the centerpiece of the Affordable Care Act. Enrollment starts on October 1st, which is little, actually, it's a week from tomorrow. And coverage begins January 1st, but the enrollment starts October 1st, so a week from tomorrow. Now, I mentioned that everyone in this country has to have insurance. There are two types of individuals who are excluded from that, and they are the undocumented individuals in this country who are not here legally, and individuals who are incarcerated. Otherwise, every person in this country has to have insurance. Okay, so what is the marketplace? You may be familiar with the term exchange, and that's actually the official term, that's the term that's in the law. But we use marketplace because we have found that people can relate better to the term marketplace than to exchange. And also, marketplace is truly reflective of what this is, because it is the market. It's a place where one can go and purchase insurance. It's a website, and I'll show you shortly what the website looks like and the web address. And anyone can go onto that website and purchase insurance. And it's a very simple-to-navigate website, it's very user-friendly, and the consumer will be able to compare prices and compare plans. It's an apples-to-apples type comparison, so it's a very simple website to navigate and a very simple process. And I know that, you know, we hear a lot how complicated it is, but we have taken steps to make sure that it is as simple to navigate and to understand and to process as possible. Now, every insurance company within the marketplace, we call them qualified health plans, QHPs, every single one of them have to, has to provide these 10 essential services. Now, most of them are already standard, that every insurance company provides now: emergency services, hospitalization, outpatient, prescription, laboratory. But there are two there that are, for the first time, we're mandating, which is number five: mental health, behavior health, and substance abuse. Now, a lot of insurance companies already provide that, but they do it as an option there. It's not because they have to, now they have to. And number 10: vision and oral care for children. We do not mandate that for adults, only for children. However, we expect most of the QHPs of the insurance companies to provide it as an option, but they have to provide it for children, and they're mandated to provide it for children. Now, who is eligible to get insurance in the marketplace? As I mentioned earlier, you have to, well, you have to live in a service area. So if you live in New Jersey, you cannot purchase insurance from the New York marketplace, or from the Pennsylvania marketplace, or any other marketplace, only from the service area that you live. As I mentioned earlier, you have to be a U.S. citizen or in this country legally, and you cannot be incarcerated. Now, I'm going to explain, so I've explained how we make it accessible. Now, I'm going to explain how we make it affordable. There are two types of subsidies, excuse me. First is the premium tax credit. Now, when you hear tax credit, you think that, like most tax credits, that you pay for it now, you cough up the money now, and then when you do your taxes next year, you get that money refunded. That's not how this is going to work. The tax credit is immediate. So what happens is, let's say, for example, that an individual goes into the marketplace and picks insurance company A, and the premium, and by the way, there are four levels. So there's bronze, silver, gold, and platinum, bronze being the least expensive, and platinum being the most expensive. So let's say that you pick a plan in the bronze level, for insurance company A, and your premium is $400 a month, and you qualify for a 50 percent tax credit. Well, that means that every month, you pay company A $200, and we, HHS, will pay the other $200 to the insurance company. And we pay it every month. So as you pay it, we pay it. So it's immediate. And the tax credit, now, that the slide says 100 percent to 400 percent, and that's actually how the law is written, however, in New Jersey, it's actually 138 percent of federal poverty level to 400 percent. And I'll explain to you why it's 138 percent in a minute. Now, 400 percent of federal poverty level is for an individual in $20, $13, almost $46,000. And for a family of four, it's a little bit over $94,000. So it's a quite generous tax credit. Now, in addition to the premium tax credit, we will also provide a cost-sharing reduction subsidy. And this is for individuals at 250 percent of federal poverty level. So that for an individual is $28,700, and for a family of four is $58,800. And this is to help, and by the way, this starts at the silver level. So if you're at the bronze level, even if you're at 250 percent or less, you don't get the cost-sharing reduction. But if you're at the silver level or higher, and you're at 250 percent of federal poverty, then you will get this assistance, which is basically to help you with your out-of-pocket expenses, so with your copays and deductibles. Now, I mentioned to you earlier that the premium tax credit starts at 138 percent of FPL, and that's because Governor Christie has chosen to expand Medicaid in New Jersey. And what this means is that any individual who is at 138 percent or less of FPL, which is, for an individual, is a little bit over $15,000, and for a family of four is a little bit over $31,000, this person is now eligible for Medicaid. Now, that wasn't the case before. Medicaid was, for example, someone who was single and didn't have dependents, what we call the childless adult, wouldn't be eligible for Medicaid, even if they could barely survive on the income they were making. But they just wouldn't be able to qualify because they didn't have any dependents. Excuse me. And also, Medicaid would take in consideration a person's assets. For the expansion, if you're at 138 percent or less, doesn't matter your status, doesn't matter your, you know, what little amount of money you may have saved in the bank, you're now eligible for Medicaid. What's significant about this is that for the first three years, it will cost the state of New Jersey zero. We will pick up, HHS will pick up the cost for the first three years at 100 percent. And then after that, we pick up 90 percent of the cost, and the state will pick up 10 percent. And this is significant savings for the taxpayer, because a lot of the uncompensated care funding that New Jersey currently has in its budget, actually, there's a reduction in the budget this year, the state budget this year, for uncompensated care, and it's due to the Medicaid expansion. The state is expected to get some $200 million for Medicaid expansion. So what this means is that, and uncompensated care, the more familiar term is charity care. So a lot of people who currently are on charity care will be moved into Medicaid expansion. And so that's money that the state of New Jersey is going to save, and in turn, will, you know, hopefully, pass that savings on to counties and municipalities. Also important to note that the application for Medicaid is the same as the marketplace. We were concerned, and initially, that wasn't the case, and we were concerned that if someone went into the marketplace to apply for the private insurance through a marketplace and wouldn't qualify because of their income, they would get a message saying, "Sorry, you don't qualify, go apply for Medicaid." And then that person would not apply for Medicaid, and we would lose that person. But we have worked it out with the state of New Jersey, so that if that happens, if a person goes into the marketplace and they qualify for Medicaid, the marketplace will notify the consumer. You don't qualify for the marketplace, but you do qualify for Medicaid expansion, we will be forwarding your application to the state of New Jersey. And in the state of New Jersey, we then contact the consumer and provide them with, you know, the information they need to finish the application for Medicaid. So it'll be a seamless process for the consumer. Now, there is also, in addition to individuals and families obtaining insurance through the marketplace, small businesses can also obtain insurance through what we call the SHOP, the Small Business Health Options Program. Basically runs the same way as the marketplace, and you'll see, when I show you the website for the marketplace, there are two tabs up on top. One says individual and families, the other one says small businesses. So if you're a small business, you just click on small business, and you'll see the options available to you as an employer. Right now, only small businesses, employers that have 50 full-time employees or less can access the marketplace, starting in 2016, it'll go up to 100 employees. But right now, it's only 50. And there is also a tax credit available for small businesses, but it's only at 25 employees or less. And it is, if, 25 full-time employees or less. And it is 35 percent for a tax-exempt employer, so for a non-for-profit, for example, and 50 percent, five-zero, for a for-profit business, but only up to 25 full-time employees. Now, this is the website. It's called healthcare.gov, and that is the page, it's a screenshot of the welcome page. And you may not be able to see it, but up there on top, underneath where it says healthcare.gov, there are the two tabs I was mentioning earlier, that says families, individuals and families, and small business. And it is a, I've been in it, and actually, you can go to it now, even though enrollment doesn't start until October 1st, so you can't enroll through it, but you can go to it to get information. And I would encourage all of you to do so, because it is a wealth of information. Anything and everything you want to know about the Affordable Care Act, you can find in this website, and it's very easy to navigate, and it's very easy language. It's not that legal term that you see a lot, you know, from the law. It's very user-friendly. We were able to translate the entire website into Spanish, so it's cuidado de salud.gov. Unfortunately, that's the only other language that we were able to translate it. However, for individuals who don't speak English or don't speak Spanish, they can apply through the phone. Well, actually, anyone can apply through the phone, but if you have that language barrier, the call center, we have two numbers. One is for individuals and families, and the other one is for small businesses. But we can provide translations of up to 150 different languages. My boss, Secretary Sebelius, was in New Jersey about two weeks ago, and she met with a group of community leaders, and she mentioned that she was, that she went to the call center, to the command center of the call center, and she was given a demonstration. And while she was there, a phone call came in from a consumer who spoke Mandarin Chinese. And she saw how the operator who took the call was able to patch in a Mandarin Chinese translator, and in less than a minute after that consumer placed his call, the consumer, the operator, and the Chinese, Mandarin Chinese translator were all engaged in the conversation in less than a minute after the call came in. So she was very impressed. And that we can do with up to 150 different languages. That phone number is up and running, so even though you can't enroll until October 1st, you can call that number to get, you know, to speak to a live person and get information and ask questions regarding the marketplace. Now, the other way, now, there, so there's, you can apply online, you can apply by phone, and the third way that you can apply is in-person, through what we call in-person assisters. There are three basic individuals who can do this: navigators, certified application counselor organizations, and agents and brokers. Now, the only difference, really, between a navigator and a CAC is that navigators are funded by us. We, oh, and let me back up here for a minute. New Jersey is a federally facilitated marketplace, as opposed to a state-based marketplace. Each state was given the option to be either. And New Jersey chose to be an FFM, excuse me, New York chose to be an SBM. The difference is that a state-based marketplace, the state runs it. The state is in charge of it. We provide the funding, but the state runs the whole marketplace. And FFM, we run it. HHS is totally responsible for running the marketplace. Now, when we, when the law was enacted, we assumed that most states would want to be a state-based marketplace. They would want to own it, they would want to control it. So the bulk of the outreach money that was allocated in the law went into that pot of money for the state-based marketplaces, and a smaller pot went into the federally facilitated marketplaces. Well, now we find that the majority of the states are federally facilitated. And so the pot of money, you know, we can transfer the monies now, so it's a small pot of money for all these states, and a lot of huge states: Texas, Florida, Pennsylvania, you know, states that are much larger than New Jersey. So the monies available to New Jersey to do outreach is very limited. Initially, we were given 1.5 million. We actually ended up with a little bit more, $2 million. And with those $2 million, we were able to hire five navigator, navigators throughout the state, five organizations that are navigators. And SS County actually has two. They are the Orange, it's a group out of the city of Orange, and also, I'm drawing a blank now, but SS County has two. And Hudson County has two. And altogether, we cover 14 counties, 14 of the 21 counties. SS County, by the way, is the largest uninsured county in New Jersey. There are over 110,000 uninsured. That number does not include the undocumented. And it's probably a conservative number, it's probably a lot more than that, but we're using Census Bureau numbers, so it's 110,000 for SS County. And so because we could not get as many navigators as we wanted or as we needed, and, you know, comparison to New York, New York, and of course, New York is much bigger, so we wouldn't have gotten the same amount of money that New York got. But New York got $27 million, and we'll get $27 million for the next five years. And they hired over 500 different navigators throughout the state. Had we been a state-based marketplace, we probably would have gotten around $20 million.
For five years?
I'm sorry?
For five, maybe five?
Yes. So because we have limited funds, we weren't able to hire as many navigators as we need, we came up with the Certified Application Counselor Organizations. And these are, as listed there, these are community health centers, these are hospitals, and other community advocates, community organizations, social service agencies that already provide services to the community. So these are places where an individual in the community knows that they can go to to get information and get assistance. So we are encouraging them to have their staff become certified application counselors. The training is the same for a CAC as it is for a navigator. The navigators get a little bit more training, but it's because, since they're funded by us, there are certain rules and regulations that they have to follow because they're funded by us. CACs are volunteers, but they do have to undergo five-hour training, basically to make sure they understand how to respect the consumers' privacy, and also obey all the security laws of the federal government. And the third type of in-person assistors are agents and brokers. Now, these are individuals who will be hired by the insurance companies. So whatever insurance companies will be in the marketplace in New Jersey, they'll be able to hire agents and brokers who have to undergo the same training as the navigators or CACs. So they will be trained, and they must be certified. Everyone who enrolls a person in the marketplace has to be certified, or else they wouldn't be able to enroll someone in the marketplace.
Do you know what insurance companies in New Jersey are going to participate in?
I do, but I'm not at liberty to reveal that. We should be revealing that information sometime this week. Actually, it has to be this week, because the first is Tuesday. So by Friday, we'll know, it'll be announced, who the insurance companies are in New Jersey. And so while they will work for the insurance companies, they do have to be certified and have to undergo the training that we provide. These are other resources and places where you can go to get additional information. Healthcare.gov, as I mentioned, is a great place to go. It's a very simple-to-understand website. Marketplace.cms.gov is also a website with a lot of information. However, it is, it's written in legal, in legal terms. So it's very high-level, so it's more for providers and for, you know, people who are in the know, basically. But for a consumer, the best place is healthcare.gov. We also have the Twitter and Facebook accounts, and that is my information, where, you know, please feel free to either email me or call me if, you know, you need information or any other assistance I can provide. And I think that's the last slide. Yes, it is. So I'll keep that up, so you can write down that information. And with that, if you have questions, I'll be happy to entertain.
Well, first, before questions start, I just really want, on behalf of the whole Board of Trustees and the residents who'll be viewing this, I want to really thank you for coming here and presenting a very informative presentation, because it is a little, little overwhelming, you know, trying to understand what this means, because it is a huge change in how many of us will obtain health care going forward. So, Mr. Gonzalez, I want to thank you for being here. Any questions from any of you?
This presentation, are we going to have it on our website?
Yeah, this is going to be on the website. So thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for coming in and talking to us tonight. And for anybody who is watching, there are the resources up there behind us, and we'll also place this video and links to these resources on our own website at southorange.org to try and help as well. Thank you again for coming.
We also have, if you go to marketplace.cms.gov, you can get widgets, so that you can put that on your website, which basically, it's a box that says, "If you need health care, click here." And the person clicks that, and it'll take them to healthcare.gov, so they can complete their, you know, the application process.
Oh, that's great.
Great, we'll definitely take a look at that. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, there's a question from Becca.
Oh, sure. There's a question back there. Do you want to just speak to the person, or?
Yes. Can someone come to the mic? Oh, can someone speak?
Yes, she's good.
She wants to know what type of combination we make for people with hearing impaired.
Can you repeat the question, so, because they can't hear?
The question was about accommodations for people that are hearing impaired?
Yes, the, and I apologize if I didn't have that number. There is a T...
TY.
TY, yes. Number under the, in the call center. So I'll give you my card, and you can email me, and I'll send you that number. And the website, by the way, is Visually Impaired Compliant 508, I think it's called, or Section 508. 508, so, so we have taken every step necessary to make sure that those who, who need special access will be able to, to obtain it.
Can you take that suggestion to your office? While there are people with TY, and a man who's on video phones, and he has someone with video phones that has signed the petition, and so, we will issue that.
I will, I will definitely take that up.
So, what, the question was video phones for the deaf?
It was a suggestion, yeah.
That's a suggestion which I will pass on. I will definitely pass on.
Great, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's probably it. Put your phone on. Yes, it's John Lewis here again, and it'll break you off the ground, so just think about it again. Vic, pick your phone.
But that's the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, there's a question from Becca.
Oh, sure, do you want, there's a question back there. Do you want to just speak to the person, or?
Yes. Can she come to the mic? Oh, can someone speak?
Yes, she's good.
She wants to know what type of combination we make for people with hearing impaired.
Can you repeat the question, so, because they can't hear?
The question was about accommodations for people that are hearing impaired?
Uh, yes, the, and I apologize that I didn't have that number, there, there is a T...
TY.
TY, yes, number under the, in the call center, so I'll give you my card, and you can email me, and I'll send you that, that number. And the website, by the way, is Visually Impaired Compliant 508, I think it's called, or Section 508, so, so we have taken every step necessary to make sure that those who, who need special access will be able to, to obtain it.
Can you take that suggestion to your office? While there are people with TY, and a man who's on video phones, and he has someone with video phones that has signed the petition, and so, we will issue that.
I will, I will definitely take that up.
So, what, the question was video phones for the deaf?
It was a suggestion, yeah.
That's a suggestion which I will pass on. I will definitely pass on.
Great, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's probably it. Put your phone on. Yes, it's John Lewis here again, and it'll break you off the ground, so just think about it again. Vic, pick your phone.
But that's the end.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee Colin?
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Here.
Trustee Levinson?
Present.
Trustee Rosner?
Here.
Trustee Schnell?
Here.
Village President, also present. Harry Lewis, Village Administrator. Stephen Roffler, Village Counsel. Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator. And myself, Chanel Smith, Acting Village Clerk. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10 colon 4 dash 6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the village's website, and has been filed in the Office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken.
Thank you. We have one resolution to start the meeting off to go into executive session.
Resolution 2013 dash 221, resolution authorizing the executive session after September 23rd, 2013 meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. In the matters to be discussed are Jersey Animal Coalition, which is an attorney-client privilege and potential litigation, Village Clerk separation agreement, which is attorney-client privilege, personnel and contract negotiation exceptions, appointment of municipal prosecutor, which is a personnel issue, and fire chief vacancy, which is a personnel issue. Unless there's any questions or comments, or have a motion?
I move.
Moved by trustee Colin, seconded by trustee Levinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Thank you, we'll be back out here at 8:30.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnell.
Here.
Village President Torpe.
Here.
Also present, Derry Lewis, Village Administrator, Stephen Rother, Village Counsel, Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator, and myself, Chanel Smith, Acting Village Clerk. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA ten colon four dash six. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the village's website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken.
Thank you. We have one resolution to start the meeting off to go into executive session.
Resolution twenty thirteen dash two twenty-one. Resolution authorizing an executive session after September twenty-third, twenty thirteen meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. And the matters to be discussed are Jersey Animal Coalition, which is an attorney-client privilege and potential litigation, Village Clerk separation agreement, which is attorney-client privilege, personnel and contract negotiation exceptions, appointment of municipal prosecutor, which is a personnel issue, and fire chief vacancy, which is a personnel issue. Unless there's any questions or comments, or have a motion?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Collin, seconded by Trustee Levinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Thank you. We'll be back out here at eight-thirty. Okay, thank you, everybody, for being here. I'd like to reconvene this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Now, please have the roll again.
Trustee Clark?
Still here.
Trustee Collin?
Here.
Trustee Davis-Ford?
Here.
Trustee Levinson?
Present.
Trustee Rosner?
Here.
Trustee Schnell?
Here.
Village President Torpe?
Here.
Also present, Derry Lewis, Village Administrator, Stephen Rother, Village Counsel, Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator, and Chanel Smith, myself.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, we've got a couple announcements tonight. Before we get started, the first is Newcomers' Day was held on Sunday, and I know there were a handful of folks here that were in attendance at the library. And we just want to make sure to thank Janice Savari and the South Orange Public Library and the Community Relations Committee, and everybody else who helped put that event together. We had a really nice turnout of some newcomers, some longtime residents, volunteers. I think everybody learned a little bit more about what's going on in South Orange. And so, thank you again for everybody who helped put that together. Also, the second art party in the park, which is down by the duck pond at the Tao Sculpture Site. And this was also a free and public event that took place on Sunday. I just wanted to make sure to thank everybody at the PRO Gallery and the Baird Center for helping put that together, showcasing some of our local artists in town. South Orange Container Day, the next date is Saturday, September twenty-eighth, from eight AM to one-thirty PM. Try and get to DPW before one-thirty. Make sure to bring a proof of residency down there, and that is for residents only, no commercial vehicles. If you do have any questions about any of that, what you can bring down and what you can't, you can call DPW at nine-seven-three-three-seven-eight-seven-seven-four-one, extension two-two-one. There's also a couple Electronic Recycling Days coming up. South Orange and Maplewood co-sponsored the electronic recycling together. On, I guess there was one that just passed, on the twenty-first. The next one is October nineteenth. That's at the Maplewood Recycling Center at three-fifty-nine Boyd and Ave. And then the next one after that is December fourteenth, here at three-hundred Walton Ave in South Orange. Make sure to bring a proof of residency down for that, and the same rules that no commercial vehicles are allowed. We're gonna have a couple announcements ongoing about this, but as we begin to renovate our historic Village Hall here, we're going to be moving our offices across the street to the third floor of seventy-six South Orange Ave. So, we'll make sure to post information clearly on the website, clearly outside. If you, someone does end up going to the wrong location, it's not too big of a deal, it's right across the street. We'll try and have some signs to make sure anybody looking for us can find us. But definitely make sure to mark that down, that beginning October seventh, we will be at the PNC Building at seventy-six South Orange Ave. Leaf removal will begin October twenty-eighth. If you have any questions about that, please visit southorange.org/leafcollection. And if you have, if you live on a county road, you can call the county, nine-seven-three-two-three-nine-three-three-six-six. One last announcement is the Second Annual South Orange Street Fair is this Sunday, from eleven AM to five PM. And it's on South Orange Ave between Vos and Scotland. There's gonna be local artists, vendors, live music, food, games, and a whole bunch of stuff for adults, for the kids, for the whole family. So, make sure to come down for that. Again, Sunday between eleven and five. And we'll have a little bit more information on our website tomorrow about that. So, the first order of business we have tonight is a proclamation for Mr. Walter Kelly. I don't know if there's somebody here, yeah, excellent. So, I'll read the proclamation. This is recognizing the one-hundredth birthday of Walter Kelly. This is recognizing the 100th birthday of Walter Kelly. Whereas Walter Kelly, former longtime South Orange resident, will be celebrating his 100th birthday on September 28th, 2013. Whereas Walter Kelly was born over the Carriage House in the Kippa State, now part of Temple Sheri Tefilo. Whereas Walter Kelly graduated Columbia High School in 1933 during the Great Depression. Whereas Walter Kelly served in the Army during World War II, initially training military canons in North Carolina and later serving in the Pacific. Whereas Walter Kelly and his wife Grace raised their three children in South Orange until relocating to Maplewood in 1956. Whereas Walter Kelly worked many years in Town Hall Deli and Our Lady of Sorrows until his retirement. Whereas Walter Kelly has consistently exemplified the type of community-oriented service and spirit valued so highly in the South Orange and Maplewood community, therefore be it proclaimed by the Village President of the Township of South Orange Village on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the entire Village of South Orange. Sincere congratulations are hereby extended to Mr. Walter Kelly as he celebrates his 100th birthday and fond memories of his life in South Orange.
You know, if you would've been here, it's like that saying early in the day, "Early rise makes a man happy, golly rise." Well, it doesn't make him welcome, but it gets him to 100.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we have another very exciting part of our agenda, which is the appointment and swearing in of new South Orange firefighters. So at this time, I'd like to invite Fire Chief Jeff Markie up.
Good evening to the Board. It's always enjoyable for me, I've had occasion as chief to preside over several of these events for me, because as I've said to the recruits, it's, they're going into a profession, and it is a profession. They are professionals. There will be a lot asked of them, and they will rise to that occasion, and I'm sure. They will be tested, and there are times when, when they will question the danger aspect of what they're doing, and I'm sure they will rise above it, and they will certainly have a very, very rewarding career, and especially in this fire department. It's always my opinion that, albeit South Orange is a small fire department, it's one of the best in the area, and I'm very proud to lead it. And that being said, I'll give a brief synopsis. The four candidates are Justin Franklin, Timothy Lozier, Kevin Burke, Corey Cuccinello. They're all graduates of the Essex County Police and Fire Academy. The class number was 2013-2. The academy class began on July 22nd, and they completed their training, their aspect of that, of our training on September 19th, at which time they graduated. They were certified as firefighter one and two at that point. They will now attend emergency medical training to, as the EMTB, to, at the conclusion of the EMT, of the EMS training classes, they'll be in Monoc Training Center in Wall, New Jersey, and that'll take about five weeks, and we can expect to see them actually assigned to a tour sometime in the, at the end of the first week in November. And I just wanted to just do some brief personal highlights on the four individuals. Timothy Lozier is a 2000 Our Lady of Sorrows graduate, a graduate of Seton Hall Prep in 2004. In 2009, attended Gibbs College and has an associate degree. Excuse me, I'm getting old, I have to put glasses on these days.
Not your 100th birthday, is it?
No. Not the 100, but, you know, I feel like I'm 100. Timothy Lozier has an associate's degree in criminal justice, cum laude. He proudly serves his country at the present time in the United States Army National Guard. He's a private first class, and he was actually, Timothy Cadet Lozier was a, he was the commanding officer of the training class that he participated in, which is a very prestigious honor. And he did, he's gonna be a very fine addition for your fire department, and I'm sure he'll do well, as will all of these candidates. Kerry Burke is a graduate of John Jay High School, in the State University of New York in Albany. He graduated with a Bachelor's of Arts in English, and has always dreamed of being a firefighter, and is a youth, and then realized that dream this evening. It's a pleasure to have him with us. Justin Franklin is a 2006 Columbia High School graduate, a 2013 Rutgers University graduate with a BA in political science. Firefighter Franklin was assigned as the scribe in the basic class 2013-2. He ensured the full and complete documentation for the entire recruit class. He has volunteered as a mentor to local high school students, and will be, also will be an asset to this department and the community. Corey Cuccinello is a graduate of 2001 of Columbia High School. Corey is part of a longtime South Orange extended family and tradition of public service. His father, who is here tonight, was, is a retired police officer, Jim Cuccinello. He served with the South Orange Police Department for 33 years. His aunt, Lynn Cuccinello, is retired and was the village clerk for South Orange, and she served for 24 years. And finally, although he was the, he was on our firefighters list, we couldn't convince him to come with us. We finally were very, very fortunate in getting a Cuccinello, but the police department kinda got two of them away from us. But, but, but that's okay, because they're both excellent police officers. And Michael Cuccinello is a South Orange police officer. He's been a South Orange police officer since the year 2000. Firefighter Cuccinello will now join a very distinguished line of dedicated public servants, and he will also be an excellent addition to the South Orange Fire Department. And that's kind of a brief breakdown of who these individuals are. I met them personally, and I think they're all four are outstanding, and I think we did well. And one of the things that impressed me the most with the hiring of these four firefighters, about three years ago, we had started an effort, Essex County, which has just under 800,000 residents and probably the most fires in the state of New Jersey, never had a firefighter training academy. We always sent our firefighters outside of the county to do our training for our firefighters. And we had fought for years to bring a fire academy into, into the Essex County area. The need was there, funding was tight, and we were successful in talking to the Essex County Police Academy. And we now have had, I think there was, I think there's been-
Eight.
Eight, eight classes go through the Essex County Public Safety Training Academy. And I've asked Director Rocco Misha to come here tonight, to speak briefly with the board about his mission, and I thank him profusely from my heart, because I think that academy is the future, and I think it's going to serve the firefighters of Essex County for many, many years to come. At this point, I'd like to introduce Director Rocco Misha from the Essex County Public Safety Training Academy.
Thank you so much, Chief Markie, to the Board, to the community, to the now graduates and their families. Thank you for having me here. I can't add too much with, to what Chief Markie said. The only thing I can add is, I want to congratulate the Village of South Orange. You did a wonderful job of recruiting. These four guys came in, they were squared away to begin with. We believe that we made them even more squared away. Just to speak to some of our mission, as the chief alluded to, we are like no other public safety academy in the state of New Jersey in the way of fire training. The recruits, the four graduates you have here, among 14 in this particular class, and the seven class that preceded, classes that preceded them, went through very rigorous training, physical agility, a lot of discipline, a lot of marching, drill and ceremony, et cetera. Why did we do that? We did it, for one word, discipline. And I know that they're gonna carry it on. They're, they're the future of fire training, they're the future of firefighters. It's our philosophy that eventually they're going to infuse each agency among the graduates with that discipline. So we hope this is the, the beginning of a new era in fire training, and I'm confident that it is. Again, I want to congratulate the, the community for such a great job. I want to congratulate the four graduates, and I assure the Board here that we've given you an excellent product, and I look forward to coming back and seeing some of them promoted in the near future. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Village President Alex Torpe, and move the resolutions to appoint these four firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Director. Unless there are any, or questions or comments from any of the trustees, at this time, I would like to ask for a motion if, before we do that, Ms. Smith, if you could just perhaps read the resolution by title?
Resolution 2013-222, resolution appointing full-time firefighters in the South Orange Department of Public Safety Fire Force?
I move the resolution.
I second.
Okay, moved by Trustee Colin, seconded by Trustee Davis Ford. Let's take a roll call, please.
Roll call? Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Colin?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
The Board passed Resolution 2013-222.
Great, thank you. At this time, I would like to, one by one, ask each of our new firefighters to come up and take the oath of office. One slight delay is we are looking for our Bible. Did anyone happen to bring their own?
If you have an iPad, you can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have an iPad?
We do, we do have one down in the clerk's office that we've used before. And while we're doing that, we're gonna ask Chief Markie to come back up and share some firefighting stories.
We have some children in there, and so maybe we should not invite them to hear those stories.
Okay, Timothy Lozier.
Are you going over here?
Yep. Do you have anybody you want to throw up here? I?
I.
State your name.
Timothy Lozier.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution-
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith-
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance-
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established-
And to the governments established.
In the United States-
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear-
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully.
Impartially-
Impartially.
And justly-
And justly.
Perform-
Perform.
All of the duties-
All of the duties.
As a firefighter-
As a firefighter.
And the Department of Public Safety Fire Force-
And the Department of Public Safety Fire Force.
For the Township of South Orange Village.
For the Township of South Orange Village.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Hey, next, Kerry Burke. Raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I, Kerry Burke.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support-
That I will support.
The Constitution-
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith-
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance-
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established-
And to the governments established.
In the United States-
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear-
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully.
Impartially-
Impartially.
And justly-
And justly.
Perform all of the duties-
Perform all of the duties.
As a firefighter-
As a firefighter.
And the Department of Public Safety Fire Force-
And the Department of Public Safety Fire Force.
For the Township of South Orange Village.
For the Township of South Orange Village.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Justin Franklin? Raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I, Justin Franklin.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support-
That I will support.
The Constitution-
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith-
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance-
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established-
And to the governments established.
In the United States-
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear-
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully.
Impartially-
Impartially.
And justly perform-
And justly perform.
All of the duties-
All of the duties.
As a firefighter-
As a firefighter.
And the Department of Public Safety Fire Force.
And the Department of Public Safety Fire Force.
For the Township of South Orange Village.
For the Township of South Orange Village.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Corey Cuccinello? I, state your name.
I, Corey Cuccinello.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support-
That I will support.
The Constitution-
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith-
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance-
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established-
And to the governments established.
In the United States-
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear-
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully.
Impartially-
Impartially.
And justly perform-
And justly perform.
All of the duties-
All of the duties.
As a firefighter-
As a firefighter.
And the Department of Public Safety Fire Force-
And the Department of Public Safety Fire Force.
For the Township of South Orange Village.
For the Township of South Orange Village.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Why don't we try and get a picture of Chief and all the new, and us? Here, come back down.
What are we doing?
Hey, are we all ready up here? You ready?
This is fine. It's fine. I just wanted to get it done. I mean, you know.
Alex.
That is the standard, though.
I wasn't sure that was what you needed. No, the standard is if you're separate, and that there's a discussion between the village and the individuals.
We're an executive.
And so she's going to.
Yeah, I think we're.
And it didn't have to be.
But this is nice language and whatever like that, but.
Are we good back there? Okay, we're going? All right. Okay, thank you. For the folks that are kind of clearing out, thank you. You're welcome to stay for the whole night. Nobody ever does, though. I don't know why. Just start doing these at the end of the meeting. All right, so thank you, everybody. I think I can speak for all of us when we are all very excited to bring on these new firefighters and for all the work that our fire department does do and for all the work that these firefighters are going to do. At this time, we have a public hearing on adoption of pre-qualification regulations for the rehab of Village Hall. And basically, what this does for us is it allows us to pre-qualify bids that come in for this project. So, because this is a project of historic nature, and because there are technical requirements above and beyond what maybe the average company can do, we are allowed to, through this process, put requirements in place before people even bid on the process to make sure that only qualified companies that are going to be able to potentially deliver what we want are even able to bid on it. This has already been approved by the DCA, and this public hearing process is the last part of it for us tonight to hear any comments from the public, and then for us to approve the regulations that will go in place for this. So, at this time, I would like to open it up for a public hearing. If there is anybody who has any comments on the pre-qualification regulations. Oddly enough, there are no public comments, so I'd like to close the public hearing. Mr. Lewis, is there anything more you want to say about that, or are there any trustees with any questions or comments about it?
No, I think you accurately summarized it. It ensures that we get qualified, experienced contractors.
Yes, which is extremely important, obviously, for a project this large and this complicated. So, we do have a later on the consent agenda, but I think it probably makes more sense to do it right now, seeing as the public hearing portion is closed. So, with that, I'd like to ask.
Great question.
Yep.
About it. Did our village engineer chime in on this?
Yeah, the village engineer, the architect, the construction manager, this was all solicited through.
Okay.
And everybody's on board.
Okay, actually, before, could we, Ms. Smith, could you just read the resolution by title?
Sure. Resolution 2013-233, "Adoption of Pre-Qualification Regulations for the Rehabilitation of South Orange Village Hall."
Thank you. At this time, unless there are any other questions, I'd like to ask for a motion.
I move.
Moved by Trustee Cullen.
I second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. Could we have the roll, please?
Sure. Roll call. Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Resolution 2013-233 is passed.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to move on to the public comment portion of the meeting. I don't know if someone can grab the sign-up sheet back there real quick. You've got to start taking these on an iPad or something. Hey, Janine Bauer, I think you know the drill.
Yes, Janine Bauer, 416 Clark Street. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to address myself to the Resolution 2013-228, "Resolution Awarding a Contract to Hatchmont McDonald for Urban Planning and Design Services for the River Greenway Improvements Along the East Branch of the Raway River, Phase 4I South Segment, Connection to Chisewich Fields, in the Amount of $239,000." I'd like to make three points. This is the first resolution that I'm aware of. There could have been another one, but I certainly don't know of any in the history of this project that did not go before the River Greenway Committee, before it came before this board, for its input or its approval. And I would like to make sure that in the future, enough time is built into the project to include the Greenways' input in time to make any changes to the resolution. I think there was enough time this summer to do that. I saw this resolution last week. I engaged the purchasing agent and the village engineer over the previous two weeks about the details. We had a lot of email back and forth, but the bottom line is, I would like to see a change in this ordinance, and that is to include the design and construction documents for bike lane or bike path, something, connecting the Third Street area to Waterlands. That is not part of this, and I think that when the new bridge goes in, which occasioned this, we, the village, received a grant for $560,000 from DOT for the new bridge to replace the, what Hatchmont McDonald told us was a structurally unsound bridge near the pump house, south of Waterlands and connecting over to the DPW area, that I think the public is just going to have questions as to why we replace the, a bridge that, you know, sort of like in the woods, and don't have the connecting trails to either side of it. And I don't mean just the, sort of the ramp improvements, but really the trails out to where people are coming from and going to, why that's not part of the project. I think it should have been part of the project. This is funded from the Open Space Trust Fund. There's enough money in the Open Space Trust Fund to make that aspect of the project, which has been an aspect of the project since the very beginning. I think the master plan was adopted in something like 2003, and I just don't see any reason why that is not part of this project. It seems illogical to me. So, that's my first, well, really, my second point. And my third point is that I've noticed a trend. The exact same thing hasn't happened two or three times now, but three different things have happened that make me come to you and say that I've noticed a trend, which is of some concern to me, and that is that the Greenway project is employed as a way of getting other work done, that the village would like to get done, whether it be the Board of Trustees, the staff, or I don't know who. And when it happened with the skatehouse in the duck pond, I think the River Greenway Committee was only too happy to take on, at the suggestion of the Board of Trustees, the work to oversee the consultants, to do the design, planning and design, and we spent endless hours in meetings talking about what to do with the geese, what to do with the pond, how to deal with the structures around the pond, whether to put in grasses, what the purpose would be of the skatehouse, whether we should have different bathrooms, whether we need a handicap bathroom, whether we should close this one, I mean, on and on, and you get the idea. We were very happy to do it because those are facilities that, although they have no integral relationship to the utility of the bike trail, they're right next door to it, and of course, we want everyone to enjoy the parks, and therefore, if they're upgraded, that becomes, you know, part of the recreational experience associated with the bike trail. A large part of the money, the $239,000, is associated with the demolition of the pump house and the surrounding area, the flood hazard permitting, and so on and so forth. This was not part of the River Greenway project. This is something that DPW and the Engineers Office would like to get done. Because we got a grant for the new bridge, and because the engineer who's being awarded this contract declared the bridge structurally unsafe, it's been determined by the engineer, our engineer and the consulting engineer, to reorient the bridge and to have it essentially go through an alignment which the pump house sits on now. So, the pump house is coming down because it's unsafe and unsightly, and also now because it's in the way of the bike path. But it's an example of, you know, a very large project getting tacked onto the bike trail, which really had no relationship even to the bike trail. All the planning that was done had the bike trail going around it in the past. That's the project and the proposal from Saratoga Associates, the landscape architect, and from Hatchmont that came before this board in May 2012 and before the planning board. So, and those are the two most recent, I won't even go into what the first one was. But I guess what I'm saying is, I think we should, I don't have any problem with the resolution, I'm here to support the resolution, but I think that the board has to be more cautious, and one of the first things, ways to be more cautious is to send it back to the River Committee, because I want to make sure that there's consensus on the project going forward, and that the original scope of the River project is not used by virtue of the two most recent amendments, which I also support, to the pay-to-play ordinance in order to get other projects done that were not in the original scope of the River project, which is really just a bike trail. I mean, everybody calls it the River Greenway, including myself, but it's a utilitarian transportation project. So, these other things that are happening, I think we need to be cautious about.
Let's make two comments.
If I can't save them until the consent agenda discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time?
My name is Mr. Alex, and I'm a longtime resident. Good evening. President Alex Torpey. Trustees, Councilman Marcus. No longer will the 23,000 residents of South Orange there stand up for any shenanigans. We will hold you accountable. We want accountability, we want to hold your feet to the fire. That's the first point. Now, point number two. Explain to me how you've been rated 19th in the community in 1999, and in the top 10 in the early 2000s, and now, under pure progress, in 2013, we are ranked 233. And here is the article that was in 1990. We, South Orange was 19th. So, explain it to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? Okay, seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to speak, I'd like to close public comments, and I think we're going to be able to address some of the concerns that were brought up in the discussion of our consent agenda. Moving on to the approval of minutes. The first is minutes for the July 22, 2013 special meeting. Do you have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Trustee Levison.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. All in favor? Any opposed positions? Thank you. The next is for minutes from the August 12. Any opposed abstentions? Thank you. The next is for minutes from the August 12th, 2013 special meeting. Do you have a motion?
Move.
Moved by trustee Schnall.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Thank you. The next is for meeting, I have special meeting listed here twice.
August 29th.
August 29th, special meeting. Do you have a motion for those minutes?
Yes.
Moved by trustee Clark.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Column. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?
I abstain.
Thank you.
Is there an abstention?
Yeah, from trustee Rosner on the August 29th special meeting minutes. Okay, so we have one resolution for separate action this evening. That's the 2013-207.
Yes. Resolution 2013-207, a resolution authorizing a purchase and installation of network and computer hardware and infrastructure equipment from and by Vion Corporation in an amount not to exceed $59,893.
Thank you. We're, we're re-adopting this resolution. There was a discrepancy between the title and the motion, so we're just doing it again tonight to make sure everything is considered. So at this time, I would like to ask for a motion. Moved by trustee Levison.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Schnall. Could we have the roll, please?
Sure. Roll call. Trustee Davisworth?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Resolution 2013-207 has passed.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to move on to the resolutions on our consent agenda.
Resolution 2013-223, resolution granting raffle license number 1237 to Our Lady of Sorrow School for an off-premise merchandise raffle. Resolution 2013-224, resolution granting raffle license 1236 to Our Lady of Sorrow School for an on-premise merchandise raffle. Resolution 2013-225, a resolution appointing a part-time clerk typist in the South Orange Tax Collector's Office. Resolution 2013-226, resolution awarding a contract for asbestos abatement in Village Hall to Tricon Enterprises, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $194,900. Resolution 2013-227, a resolution awarding a contract to Continental Resources, Inc., DBA Conrest for the purchase of VOIP telephone system and equipment in an amount not to exceed $31,048. Resolution 2013-228, resolution awarding a contract to Hatchmont McDonald for urban planning and design services for the River Greenway improvements along the east branch of the Raway River Phase 4I, South segment connection to Chisewich Field in the amount of $239,000. Is that right? $239,000. Resolution 2013-229, resolution authorizing a village administrator to approve a water extension permit application for the township of South Orange Village Water Department. Resolution 2013-230, resolution appointing a part-time employee in the Department of Public Works. Resolution 2013-231, resolution appointing municipal prosecutor.
Yeah, there's going to be two. You can keep going. There's going to be two that...
Resolution 232, resolution authorizing the sale of Old Stone House, improving advertisement for sale of the same. Resolution 233 has already been adopted. Resolution 213-234, resolution authorizing the execution of an individual separation and release agreement with Robin Clown.
If you would reread the, the title from the document.
Yes, that was, that was correct. And, and yes, 233 and 231 have been removed from the consent agenda tonight, and the title in 234 is what was just read by our acting partner. Are there questions or comments on any of the other consent agenda resolutions?
Just a, a quick question on 226, though it's wonderful to that we, we look like we're saving a lot of money. I'm just curious, I think that bid was, was close to half of what the others. Is there any knowledge of why it's so substantially different?
Well, we conducted a, a meeting with the, the vendor, with a court stenographer present. We took a record pointing out what the contract required of them, that there were no changes, that if indeed they believed they had made a mistake, that we would release their bid bond with, with no prejudice to them for having made the bid. And we gave them the opportunity, and we took a break in the meeting to allow them to go back, reexamine the space, come back with any questions. There were some minor questions which were answered. We had our consultant present at the time. The entire meeting was taken down by the court stenographer. We have a transcript of that proceeding where it's absolutely clear that they did not make a mistake, and that there are no change orders, and they're going to complete the job for that sum.
That's great.
I, I have additional questions on that as well. Barry, can you go over what the original estimate was and where we are with?
Yeah, you'll recall, and, and when, when I talk about the original estimate, it is, what I'm saying is the original informed estimate. When, last year, when I got into it, there was a sort of a back-of-the-envelope estimate that was based on a 10-year-old asbestos abatement study that was really only related to continued occupancy by employees, not in any way connected with a renovation. Based upon that, we did commission and hired and had completed an updated assessment where they came up with a full scope, applied the current standards, came up with the quantities. Based on that assessment, the engineer's estimate was $616,000. So this is significantly below that. I would note that we did also have quite a number of bids well below that. This one was even well below those bids. So we were obviously cautious and, but we, I think, are, you know, more than exercised our diligence. We had our consultant from Hatchmont there. The village engineer was there. It was a very deliberative process, went through that they fully understood the scope, how many hours, while Hatchmont, I think, you know, thought it was, you know, low and it was, it was an aggressive bid. They didn't think that there was, I didn't think anything had brought to light that appeared that they were not fully knowing what they were getting into. So we're, you know, we will be diligent. We will monitor the project closely, but we're certainly and obviously thrilled to come in that much under budget.
Yeah, and one other thing that, that you should know is, we insisted on having a principal of the company present for the meeting, and also the individual who actually did the cost estimation for the job. So we had the two key people there from the vendor that, that knew of the circumstances under which the bid was made, had the opportunity to ask questions, and had the authority, in fact, to tell us that their bid was, was a valid bid, that they wanted to pursue it.
And, and do we have a history? I mean, is the, can we see that they have done, successfully done abatement projects in the past, or is that...
They have, I mean, they, they've been in the business for a while. They're the, our consultants check references. They've completed projects. As with any projects, they've had some. They were behind schedule, but we, that doesn't, in the context of our case, we will, we will hold them. They're, they're on a firm schedule. Under the law, candidly, there are limited circumstances under which you can reject a low bidder. It is only if you have had a documented prior negative experience, even if your neighbor says they're the worst ever stay away, unlike what you or I would do. We can't do that. Or if they're on a state barred contractor list, which they are not. They were able to and did produce bonding with A&amp;B rated companies in the full amount. So all the, all the contractual protections that we have built in, they, they did. They, they are not, you know, they weren't just formed last week. They do have a history of, and so we're, you know, again, we will be cautious and we will be diligent, but we're, we're confident we'll get it done. And, and again, it's $400,000 in savings.
Yeah, the important point is that we're required to take the lowest qualified bidder, and that's for some reason why. And this is, you know, one of the issues with the firehouse was that we had to take the lowest qualified bidder, and it turned out he wasn't qualified, but of course, at that time, he was. And that's one of the issues. But also for the asbestos abatement industry, in the, in the last 10 to 15 years, there's been numerous new car companies that do it. I know we quoted going back many years ago for the firehouse. It was a much harder thing to find companies that could do it. Now there was any number of companies that wanted to bid on it, and plus the fact there's so much work, and they've improved the methods, that it's also driven the price down in, in the industry. But, you know, so $400,000, and a couple of minor change orders, we should still be saving a lot off the estimate.
Just a follow-up question. Given that we pass this, when does it start?
The actual work? Yes. Well, probably a couple, three weeks of the paperwork, signing the contracts, you know, they producing the bonds, they, there are permits that they have to get. But we, we envision them. I mean, we're scheduled to be moving out of here, the 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th of October, opening up Cross Street on October 7th. You know, whether they're actually in here, they may be mobilizing that week, and then, you know, the initial steps, they got to sort of seal off the building and all that. But it'll be shortly after we move out.
Okay, thank you.
Are there, given that there's some, you know, potential risk, health-related risk with these things, in case things go wrong, not that we would ever hope or expect that, or, you know, is, is, where's our liability in case it does go into the air and other, whether it's the workers get affected or anybody else, or, you know, are we covered for that liability?
Well, we're, we're going to have our consultants on the job on almost a daily basis here. So the, the likelihood of that happening, because all of those risk-related steps that they have to take are going to be supervised by our consultants. So that should minimize the likelihood of that.
Once this project starts, what's the estimated time for it to be completed?
Under the contract, they have 60 days from when they start to finish. And during that period, and, and once, once that's completed, then the architect comes in, takes a final look-through. Now that all the walls are exposed, you can see the condition of the wiring, the plumbing, et cetera, makes any final adjustments to the main renovation plans and specifications, and then we go out to bid.
Okay. Are there questions or comments on any other items on...
Can we go over 228, the comments that were raised by Ms. Bauer?
I was going to comment. One thing is, I did meet with Ms. Bauer on Saturday, Sunday, whatever day it was, over the weekend, and just to look at the, the path from Third Street down to the, to the park entrance, and using that, making it a shared bike lane with the road there. There is some issues, and Sal will have to look at it, how we could work it out. But I think it's doable in the long run and save a lot of money off of, off of redoing and taking down the trees next to the gaslight comments. But we'll have Sal look at that and deal with that issue, to can finish up that bike path. And if we do it as a shared road, it could be a fairly easy, reasonable, quick solution. To the point about the pump house, which if you go back into the minutes, you'll see the first discussion of taking down the pump house was in the early 80s. But first, they talked about renovating, they talked about tearing it down. It just keeps getting put off and put off and put off. And I think that part of the traction here was that it was a good time to do it and combine it with the other project because of the location. And it's not one of those things that you can't say we rushed into, or this board rushed into, or the prior board rushed into. Although, when I looked at the numbers, the minutes that some trustee, former trustee had shown me, and the number was so small back then, I was like, oh my God, why didn't you just do it then when it was possible? But it's one of those things, just gets, seems to get more and more expensive every year to, to fix it, even though the building's crumbling. It just seems like it's harder to believe that the price goes up and not down. But, and I think that was part of the motivation. But I think it was definitely a mistake not to send it to the River Greenway Committee, especially since we have that committee. They meet at least almost every month. I think there's only one or two months a year they wind up missing, but we should, we deal, we need to stay on top of it and, and keep the thing focused on what the original plan was. And, and I think it did encompass more than just the bike path. There's, in many cases, it did go out past it, but we, we need to look at that thing and stay on target. And one of the things about having our open space funds is we have to decide what percentage of our open space funds we want to use for matching grant money for the River Greenway project and so forth. And the board, as part of our policy, needs to discuss that, because we've never really had a clear-cut policy on it, on how we're going to do that. We keep talking about having percentages of money go for recreation and percentage for the River Greenway, et cetera. But we need to reexamine that policy with this board, since some of the members are different.
So what would that process look like? I think probably not a good idea to modify resolutions in real time, but some suggestions that Ms. Bauer came up with, would we be able to go back and incorporate some of these ideas once the River Committee meets, if, if that's a consensus?
Yeah.
Or if we pass this resolution?
No, we could, there's expansion of that, but the park, you know, from, from the park down to Third Street is, is something of the River Greenway...
It's a different project.
Excuse me?
It's a different project.
It's a different project, but it's one that could be done very quickly and probably using our open space funds to, to finish that project. And whether it means doing a shared road project, or doing a little bit of work on, on the, on the, on the east side of, of the drive to Waterlands, it's all part of it done. But I think, I think the Sal could handle most of the work, even though, you know, he's overloaded with other stuff. I think we could do a lot of it internally. I don't think we have to go outside for doing it, just like we did on Mead Street and stuff. Trustee Bauer, former trustee Bauer, made the one point of saying that if you do the shared roadway, we need the bike markings on both sides of the street, which in that way, quite sure how we do with the parking. But it's just something that, that we'll have to ask Sal. He can address that issue or look at it, or what other solutions there are to that, or if we have to go back and do the whole full cost. Originally, we talked about taking down a lot of trees and, and putting a path on between the parked cars and the gaslight comments fence. But I, I thought there was a lot of negatives to that project doing it that way, but it's, that's the way it has to be. It has to be. What I think the first step is to do is to have River Greenway and Sal look at the, first step would be have Sal through the DPW Committee look at it, and then bring it to the River Greenway. You're now the...
Yes.
The liaison to the River Greenway project. So it coordinates having you there, so you can discuss it with Sal and then we're back to them.
Indeed.
Do you know the next time that you're meeting?
I don't. Janine, is there a, a meeting date set? I know you pushed the, the previous one, but...
You got to repeat anything she says, Walter, for the mic.
Oh, okay. Obviously, please let me know.
So was there consensus to remove this item from this consent agenda, or you want to move forward with it and...
Move forward.
Okay.
Move forward.
No, and I, I think in, to trustee Rosner's point, we could, and I, I certainly think it's worth looking at, and particularly when you get into the DEP permitting, because there was an email back, and I'm not sure who, if everyone got copied on, from our village engineer to former trustee Bauer, where he expressed concerns about the timing of it. But at the same, but he also suggested that some of potential improvements on that bike way along, you know, from Third to New Waterlands may require DEP permitting. And there's certainly some, I think, a lot of logic to, if we're going to have a consultant going down to DEP getting permitting on one project, if you incorporate it all. So, but that could certainly be done by way of a change order. I don't think that whatever design work is associated with that particular section would be in an amount that would be precluded from being added at a later time. So I'll certainly talk to Sal about that and, and whether we can work that in. And just one other point, just to be clear, that the, the grant for the bridge does not allow us to, that monies can't be spent on professional services, so they're not related to this. And we are certainly sensitive, and, and there was previously capital money, non-open space money appropriated relating to this DPW project. So we will, although the demolition, the pump house has sort of rolled into it, because it seems to make sense under one big project, we are sensitive to the funding and not sort of usurping some of the open space or other funds towards what otherwise would not be an, an open space project.
There's also the timing issue on the grant.
Right.
Okay.
Another question about the trustee Rosner. You brought up the Open Space Advisory Committee. Have we had movement on that, what the scope of that committee does? I'm looking at you just because you said it. I, I don't believe they've convened in a while, correct?
They haven't convened in a while, and I think we have to, a couple of members expressed that they weren't no longer interested in being on it, and a couple had, and we, we, every one of their terms has expired, so we can, we need to, we need to, we should send letters to the current members and advertise and reconvene the board. And I can't see any way of doing it at this point, and reconvene that committee. But I think, at the same time, on a parallel path, this board has to give a direction of what we want. And that's always been the issue, is that we haven't had a unified voice to tell them what we want. So if we say, you know, if, if, you know, if two members want all the money spent for recreation, and three members want all the money spent there, and one member wants someplace else, it sort of sends a mixed message. So we need to come to an agreement, so either through a planning meeting...
A policy position, yeah.
Or we can do the planning and zoning, or whatever we want. But we need to, we need to say, this is, we want to set forth the policy of how we want that money to be used going forth, and what we think the best purposes of it under what the ordinance states, and so forth. And at the same time, while we're bringing up the Open Space Committee, and we say to them, this is the board's wants the direction, we want you to work within those parameters. I think that's the way we should be going forth on it. those parameters, I think that's the way we should be going forth on it, so at least.
Do you want to add it to our next agenda for planning and zoning?
Yeah.
And just start the conversation there, and Ms. Smith, if we can start advertising to start getting people to submit?
Yeah, meantime, the acting corps should reach out to the current members, ask if they still want to do it, at the same time advertise for new members for the open space committee.
Ms. Smith, does that work for you?
No.
No? She said no?
She said no problem.
All I heard was the no.
Say you would like to start to advertise for volunteers for the open space committee?
And reach out to the
And reach out to former?
And we should try and have this, you know, so we can, and we'd like to, you know, if we, if we advertise for people, and this all takes place during the next month, then first meeting in November, we should be prepared to appoint new members and have the first meeting.
Okay.
Well, I think
That sounds good to me.
But before we, we have that first meeting, I think we need to understand what our policy is, and at least have a structured mission for what they, they're about, I think it's been confusing in the past.
Yeah, so we're gonna discuss the planning zone, and then we'll come back with the recommendation.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Are you okay?
Great question.
I heard that.
Can we go back to?
No.
What was I, the, just a general question regarding the asbestos abatement, we did have a request for a cost worksheet, any ideas when, not, not just on this, but just the totality of the project, I believe we committed to providing that?
Yeah, we
This is kind of the first bit of good news, so I might updating that.
We have a project meeting scheduled for Wednesday, which will be the first meeting after receipt of these asbestos bids, which has been sort of the last big piece of the puzzle, so we'll meet, and I'm gonna check availability, but my thought was, we could bring perhaps back the construction manager, possibly the architect, for the October meeting for a renewed presentation, now that a lot of, I think we're at the 90% phase in the design drawings, so it's probably an opportune time, so we can look to do it at that meeting.
And so we can lay this all out on a spreadsheet, to see exactly where we stand.
Where we are with the budget, where we are with the timeframe, where the, you know, and again, have the architect, have the construction
And we should have a timeline now.
Right.
A real timeline on that.
And how often will we do those updates, will it be monthly, quarterly?
Daily.
I mean, we can usually do them once a month in the conference agendas during your updates.
Yeah, certainly, I, I can give updates, obviously, if something develops, or something unforeseen comes up, we'll, we'll address it, and if it warrants bringing in the professionals, we'll bring them in, but we'll do that.
This is as well discussed in public works as well as in finance.
Sure, what?
Public work, the schedule for the village roll.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions on, on any consent agenda items? Okay, then I would be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus 231 and 233.
I move.
Okay, moved by trustee Levison, seconded by trustee Davis Ford, we have the roll, please.
Roll call, trustee Levison?
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Consent agenda has passed.
Thank you, at this time I'd like to move on to the approval of bills.
Yeah, I move with the exception noted by email to the administrator, the list of bills audited by the village treasurer dated September 23, 2013, which has been provided to the board for examination.
Were your questions addressed?
No.
So we're pulling those bills from the list?
Yeah, pending response.
Hold them up.
Okay.
Wait, which?
Yeah, I want to make sure which.
All of the ones that you talked about via email are being pulled?
Yeah, it was 80% of the bills, but that's
Yeah, is that including the market research one, Howard?
Yes, yes.
That it's being pulled, okay.
Okay, that was the motion by trustee Levison.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Rosner, we have a roll, please.
Sure.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
The bill list was approved.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, at this time I'd like to open the meeting up for public comments again, if there's anybody else from the public who wishes to speak, I'm seeing as there's no member of the public who wishes to speak at this time, we can move on to the last part of our meeting, we have a couple very quick discussion items, the first is, in our last planning meeting that we held at SOPAC, one of the things that we discussed was finally adopting the charter changes, recommendations that were made by the charter review committee, so it's basically what we discussed for folks that weren't at that meeting, or didn't see any of the coverage of that, what we're talking about is adding basically all of the smaller changes, if you look at the really comprehensive review that the charter review committee put together, they broke the recommendations really into two categories, one being almost procedural, typographical, updating genders, things like that throughout the document, I don't think there's any discussion or even question of any of those, and then, three out of the four larger recommendations that were made, or three out of, or four out of five that were made, or three out of five that were made, the three recommendations being changing the name of the town from township of South Orange Village to South Orange Village, changing our titles from village president to mayor, and trustee to council, and also to implement some form of stipends, not for the current board, but for a future board, so I want to list those on the next meeting, which is what we discussed in our planning meeting, and I wanted to add it for discussion first, so if there were any thoughts or comments people had that we didn't get a chance to discuss in our planning meeting, that we could obviously do so when we vote on it, but if there's anything else that people want to discuss, at this time, certainly happy to entertain that.
Me, I, I still want the November option, I don't know if the new trustees have had an opportunity to review the charter review recommendations, so if you want to take a look at that, I don't want a listing of any resolution until this board, since we'll be the board that's voting on it, has an opportunity to discuss all the options that were spelled out by our charter review committee.
Just to point out, even if we vote on it, it still goes to public referendum, and then down to legislature.
It doesn't have to, that's
It doesn't have to.
It's already gone to public referendum on those three items, and it was passed by public referendum, so we've done that.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say briefly, we did have this discussion in the planning meeting, and the, what will be added is the three changes, that's what the board agreed to in the planning meeting, so you're certainly free to amend that, and hopefully people have had a chance to review those before we had the discussion in the planning meeting, but I don't know
Well, we also discussed adding the question to one of the municipal ballots, we couldn't add it to this one because
It's too late.
It was too late, so the decision of whether or not to add it to the next general election one, which would be November of 2014, or the following May municipal election is still up to this board for consideration.
Yeah, and the two things aren't mutually exclusive either, we could certainly pass these things if we want to and get the process moving, which is probably gonna take, what, a year, 18 months to actually get the legis-
Well, it depends how quickly the legislature acts.
So, so, you know, there's nothing happening in any kind of immediate term anyway, but this is something that we've discussed, I mean, those, those recommendations came out before, I know, before I was elected, you know, in 2011, in fact, I think they finished up right as that was happening, because village president Newman was on the committee and retained his position on the committee after stepping down as village president, so anyway, so that's something, this has been over two and a half years, we haven't acted on the recommendations, which is pretty pathetic.
The process is, after you adopt an ordinance, it's gonna be sent to someone to sponsor, you're gonna have to have a legislative sponsor, it's gonna have to go to the office of legislative services for them to check it out, it's gonna have to go to the appropriate committee of both houses, of the assembly and the senate, both of them have to approve it in the same form before it can come back and be in its final form, so it's gonna take at least a year, I would imagine, before you would see something final following your adoption of an ordinance.
Trustee Schnall, did you have an opportunity to go read the report from the charter review committee, to look at the recommendations?
I still have not gotten
Okay, it seems that we have two new members who, and I was a member of the charter review committee, so I'm very familiar with them, I would ask that we hold off on creating any resolution adopting recommendations that change our village's charter, without first providing both trustee Schnall and trustee Clark an opportunity to review all the recommendations.
Well, it's a little surprising that folks haven't reviewed them, as we've actually already discussed them, so, so, you know, we're gonna go ahead and add it for the next meeting, hopefully, if you guys can get the chance to really review that, you know, we did have the discussion already in the planning meeting, that was, you know, we all
Well, the four of you agreed to move forward with it, what I'm asking for is, there's other new board members.
Oh, of course.
I mean, you have the four votes to, of course, pass it.
No, everybody should, I'm, I'm just surprised that everyone hadn't already read it, because we've already discussed it, it's already listed on a meeting to discuss ahead of time, so I sort of thought everybody would prepare for that, but anyway, if there's any questions, I mean, it's all available, and we can recirculate all the information to people, but there is no reason to continue to wait, so if you guys could review that, you know, in as much depth as you can, and we'll get an opportunity to discuss that in the next meeting, if you have any questions that come up, you can certainly direct them in the meantime to trustee Cullen, who's on the committee, to myself, to village council, to anybody, you know, that was part of that, and hopefully you can get any questions answered.
The separate four or five questions are really the only place you have to look, I, I mean
Right, everything else was pretty procedural.
At the end of details, because a, a lot of what was recommended in, in all that boilerplate were matters that were already applicable under current law, and so
Right, right, a lot of it was deferring a state statute.
It's not worth spending a lot of time reading.
Is this gonna be done via ordinance or resolution?
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
Okay, so we will have a public hearing on it, and they'll go through that process as well.
Absolutely.
Any other questions at this time? Okay, so the next is, we got a, a request from Essex County, Maplewood, a couple other towns have kind of served with the same request, that was about adding street lighting up South Orange Ave, all the way through the S-curves, starting at Stonehill Road in South Orange, going up to Milverne or West Orange, maybe, and I think that there were two components to that, there seemed to be some improvement of existing actual street lighting as part of the plan, and then there was also the piece that we got, which was like decor, they called decorative lighting, right, those, that's the term that they used, and basically the letter is asking if we would kind of agree to that, and, and so it would be decorative lighting up along the S-curves, and it would come at no cost to us initially, but our village engineer estimated that around $2,000 a month would spend on utilities for the lights.
Additional.
Sorry?
Additional.
In addition, right, right, and Maplewood also made their kind of question of decorative lighting, and the amount of money that that would cost for taxpayers to pay for, known to the county, I'd like to do the same, obviously, if there's street lighting that needs to be fixed to make the streets safe, you know, I think that's reasonable, I don't, I can't imagine, I don't, there's not even pedestrian walkways on the S-curves, so even though it's, it's a nice idea, you know, in this economy, $2,000 a month in our budget, you know, there's, you know, I don't imagine that we could, we could
In the original proposal, which is like 10 years ago, when they came forth, and they did a whole presentation in the other room upstairs, the county came forth, they asked us what kind of lighting they wanted, and they agreed to put up the same electrified gaslights that we have in the village, and they would run them from Wyoming Avenue up to the reservation, just so we'd have a unified look, even though most of that property through the reservation does not belong to South Orange, there's only a small section of it, at no cost to the village, or whoever's town the property was on, done, and they were gonna do other improvements, and then it came back that they delayed it, and then they took out some of the improvements, now we're at a point where they're trying to shift the cost back to the municipalities, even though most of the property is not our property, and this is being done more for them than it is for us, and it's a county road on top of it.
If they do solar, we'll pay for the utilities.
It's, it's, if they pay for the installation of solar, yeah, but it's just, it's very, it's very disturbing that the county would change their, their whole position on this so greatly, and basically, other than putting it in a nicer way, their shift and the municipalities have a cost that really belongs to the county, it's their road, it's their reservation, and should be their responsibility, so I would say, no, we're not gonna agree to it, because it's, it's absolutely, I wouldn't agree with, because there's absolutely no reason why we should have an increased cost for them, especially when they, in turn, what we pay for county, what we get back is zilch.
It's the recommendation
No, it's open to the board.
Yeah, excuse me, it's the recommendation of both the finance committee and the public works committee
Yeah.
Not to accept it, but the difference being, the proposal from the county includes now lamps, which we don't currently have along South Orange Ave, because currently the Cobra lamps are on the Maplewood side, except for one, which Maplewood is paying for currently, Cobra lights light both sides of the road.
Sounds great, such a good service we can have behind.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, the Cobra lights are the ones that do the real lighting, the other ones are truly decorative, they, I mean, we've all seen the Gasland style, they don't cast light very well.
So unless, unless there's, unless there's any differing of opinion, I'm happy to send a letter saying thank you, you know, if there's upgrades to the street lighting, you know, for safety purposes, I think we'd be interested in talking about that, but for decorative lighting, it just doesn't sound like something that we're interested in burning our taxpayers with.
And Maplewood also is sending that message along?
Yeah, they sent the same, they answered that letter, yeah.
But by the same token, we, we, we did not, we intentionally did not add some gaslights between Stonehill and specifically Glenview, there are some dark spots on there, we've been hailing off on these, adding the old-fashioned gaslights there, which we should now talk about as our own thing, whether we need to add those gaslights, actually, I think we, it goes from, if you look at, from Mayhew up, there's some very, there's a couple of very dark spots there
Yeah, there is.
That we should look at and add in the gaslights now, that, that we're not gonna go in for
We could add Cobras as well.
Or the electrified gaslights, but I don't think there's any conduits there, so that's another issue.
But we have poles there.
Yes, okay, but since the county project is off the table for us, we should bring that back to public works to discuss.
Just a small note, the, if I remember correctly, the letter from Maplewood came from their village administrator, so I don't know if it's a matter of course that it should come from our village administrator versus the village president, but
Yeah, we'll co-sign it. Okay. So the next is government energy aggregation, trustee Clark?
Yes, hopefully some of you have gotten a chance to take a look at the document I put, I attached to the Jot Form, I don't know if you are all in the habit of pulling down everything that's on a Jot Form, but, so I don't know whether I should assume that you've read that or not, but, the short form is that because of a, something called the Government Energy Aggregation Act, any municipal government in South Orange has, in New Jersey, has an opportunity to potentially save their, their residents some money on their, their electrical bills, basically, by doing something called government aggregation, energy aggregation, which is essentially a municipality goes through a bid process and chooses a third-party provider, you've probably all gotten these, you know, pitches from, from various groups for your own personal residential bills, where a third-party provider will provide you your electricity, even though it's still coming through PSENG's distribution network, and they, you know, will get you, I don't know, a penny off or whatever their, their particular offer is at that time, so it's the same basic idea, except the government energy aggregation piece of it is that because the, the government can effectively set up a bid process, and you have a larger group of people to draw from, the third-party providers are then bidding on, well, it's, you know, buying in bulk, basically, they, they get, they get a, a load, a considerable load, they can then use as part of their bid process to hopefully get better rates for everybody, so that is essentially the idea in a nutshell. The environmental commission and the energy policy committee were visited by Fred Propheta from Maplewood, a gentleman Javier Barrios, who represent a company called Good Energy, which does that, they're, they're one of those, they're actually consultants that handle the process of going out and getting the whole bid system done, and so they made a presentation to the environmental commission, and they're also pitching, frankly, a, a green energy aspect to this, because one of the things you can do as a municipality, when you set up the bid, the parameters of the bid, you can say, we want X percentage of this to be renewable energies, or green energies, I won't call them that, presently, I believe the state requires 12%, but again, you could set up whatever percentage you want, Good Energy was shooting for 100%, they think that they can go for 100% and still come up with some savings for individual residents. We, some members of the Energy Policy Committee did some research on this, so shout out to Joe Korb for doing a lot of legwork. And one of the things he found was, in researching some competitors who also do the consulting piece of this, many of them are less bullish on the 100% recyclable, or renewable energy. But you can, you know, we could set up a bid process where you had 100, what do you get for 50, what do you get for 20? That's all part of how we would potentially structure the whole bid process. Anyway, so it seems like there is a potential for, you know, simply the stroke of a pen on our part, to be able to save any resident of South Orange some money on their electrical bill. However, I do have some questions myself. I think a lot of people may react negatively to frankly having their choice of energy provider taken away from them in theory. Well, it's kind of the same model as our trash collection or recyclables being picked up. I think just the idea that you've suddenly lost your choice will be negative for many people. Additionally, there's no guarantee through the bid process that you will get any kind of significant savings, and just to further slice the process a little bit more, if any of you pay close attention to your PSE&amp;G bills, you'll see that there's actually three pieces to it. There's the, well, there's taxes, there's the distribution charges, and then there's the supply charge. So these savings really only apply to the supply, because PSE&amp;G is still using their lines to get electricity to you regardless of whatever third-party you're supposedly getting supplied from. So it's just that supply piece that you could potentially get savings on. Having no one else's figures available, I went back and looked at my own bills for the past year or so, and I, you know, family of four, I don't really know whether or not we represent an average household in South Orange or not. I'm kind of an energy weenie, so maybe my bills are lower than mine, I don't know.
An energy weenie?
That's a technical term.
I like that.
Means lots of LED bulbs and things like that, insulation, that sort of double pane windows, that sort of thing. Anyway, so just the supply piece of my bills for the past year came out to $1,000, $100 bucks. So if, if we were able to work a deal that got a 5% savings, it'd be $50 bucks over the course of a year. If we were able to get 10% savings, it'd be $100 bucks, which, you know, again, I don't know where I am as far as the average user in South Orange, but it's $100 bucks. Again, we'd have to see through a bid process just how good a deal you could get, and the other thing the consultants do is they handle the process, basically, of going out and getting the bids. And then when you're talking about renewable energy, they handle the, what are called RECs, which stands for a Required Energy Certificate. So the environmental green piece of it, where you're purchasing RECs for renewable energy, just so everybody understands, it's not a guarantee that you, Deborah, will be getting only electricity from windmills coming into your house. That's, that's not how the electricity works. Basically, you can't, you can't splice the electrons once they're made and they're out there. You really can't necessarily source where they've come from. So the whole REC system is basically a way to try to encourage the market by basically purchasing a REC through your choice of the third-party providers, you know, percentage of renewables, and then that certificate says that somebody somewhere used renewable energy for 1 kilowatt hour. So it's not a guarantee that you are getting green energy coming through your pipeline, but basically, you are sort of taking part and spurring the market towards that.
And so, just for my clarification, is this something that Maplewood has adopted, or is it just considering?
Maplewood has not adopted it, that I know of. It's in consideration. What, one of the things Fred Profeta was really interested in doing was trying to get Maplewood, Milburn, and South Orange to all go in together, because then it's obviously a much bigger, a much bigger, you know, you get better buying power that way.
So just to continue along that line, so has he presented to Maplewood, and has it been well received, or do you have any idea?
I don't know how Maplewood has received it. I was basically interested in just finding out whether you were interested in pursuing this.
So I have a question, trustee Clark. Actually, two questions. First is, you did contrast it to the way our garbage is picked up. Is it possible to still have it opt-in, or to get the buying power, or do you have that mandate that everybody uses it?
Yeah, the way it works is that individual residents can opt-out. Okay, so basically, it's, if we went through the whole process, at some point, you'd receive a bill, and it would say that, you know, third-party supplier X is now your supplier of electricity. If you had a problem with that, you would have to contact them and opt-out, but you could.
And if you opt-out, you would either default back to either PSE&amp;G or any of the other third-party.
Right, you would go back to PSE&amp;G or whoever you so choose. There is a, I'm not sure why, but because of the way the law is structured, commercial entities, so, you know, any of the village businesses have to opt-in. I don't know why, but commercial has to opt-in, residents would have the option of opting out.
Has there been historically, I mean, the truth with these other third-parties, they go out there and they say they're variable pricing, and they attempt using derivative future contracts, et cetera, to get better pricing.
Right.
Some of them, for a promotional period, will quote guarantee a better rate than the public utility does. Using buying power, are there ways to contract that? I mean, you know, it would be kind of, obviously, a very bad thing if the whole town, you know, contracts, and then they get worse rates, they do a bad deal, for instance.
Right. Basically, what's going on there is you're cutting a deal, and as part of your bid process, you do it for a period of time, and when that time is up, they would have to renegotiate rates. And that, one of the things that Joe Korb for the Energy Policy Committee uncovered is that there are good times to get involved in this and less good times. I believe they, in the spring, they readjust all the forecasting and things, so you want to play this game before then, when things still look rosy.
Well, it's higher risk during the winter months when, depending on weather and et cetera, so that's, I think that's...
There's a time when they do the bidding.
Yes, they do their bidding in the, in the spring.
So what's the next step, trustee Clark? It seems, did both the Environmental Commission and Energy Policy Committees recommend this to the board?
They're pretty positive on it. Again, you know, we still have questions. I personally feel like the whole green energy aspect of it is kind of overselling it a bit. I mean, you are indirectly helping the market, but I would want not, I wouldn't want to oversell the whole renewable energy thing as, you know...
Unless you get a critical mass, I mean, like states and, you know, really involved in this, a municipality here or there really, like you said, is overselling their green energy impact.
Yeah, and frankly, you, through this process, though, you can improve upon what the state has mandated, you know, you can go higher than their 12% and probably still come up with savings. So, yeah, both of those groups are more or less in favor of it. Energy Policy Committee is a little bit more skeptical, but that's kind of their nature, they're number-crunching guys, and they want to see what the deal is. So, and frankly, there, it would be a somewhat long walk to that. There's a, there's a whole public referendum piece that needs to go on. But again, if you can get a good deal...
I didn't read that part. It does have to be approved through a public referendum.
Well, you would want to have a whole public, you know, awareness of what's going on.
Well, then we have some time with it, right?
The process makes the assumption that people will not opt-out of the plan. The first part is, is that people who already have third-party providers don't, are not part of it. Those people who have PSE&amp;G electric would automatically be opted in, and you would, people would opt-out. We need to understand what the percentage of people would be opting out of that and staying with either a third-party provider or PSE&amp;G. If you get enough people who opt-out, it doesn't become economical for, to go out and bid. And so that's part of the criteria that you need to use.
I see, okay.
The other is, is that you're at risk. The prices may change.
But, but don't you mitigate that risk by locking down the rates for a specific period of time?
Yeah, but PSE&amp;G's rates could go lower. And it depends upon the amount of renewable power that you're buying. You reduce the savings as you increase the renewables.
Okay.
Do people's savings is being more energy efficient?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Being a weenie.
So what is the action on this, or non-action? Or is this just more information?
I think it was simply informational, there was no official recommendation.
It's informational, I just want to find out whether you're in general in favor of pursuing it further, or whether you think it sounds like a crazy idea, you don't want to foist on the public, because, you know, we could find something else to do in both of those two committees, and, but if you think it's worth going forward with, do some more research and start looking.
It sounded like people were interested in a little fact-finding.
Yeah.
Especially if the citizen committees are interested in pursuing it more. I trust their advice and just continue learning more about it.
All right.
Thanks for calling to do that. Appreciate it.
I think there are two towns that currently are doing it.
Yeah, in New Jersey, it's Plumstead and Tom's River, both have programs going and apparently...
We should find out what their results are.
Apparently successful. I believe Joe's already, Joe Korb has already contacted...
I mean, as follow-up.
Right. Fred Profeta's group, Good Energy, has done this a number of times, not only in New Jersey, but in, in other states, and at the given moment, apparently, West Orange is getting involved, let's see, West Orange and I believe Montclair is also in discussion stages of doing this as well. So, if you like bandwagon, there you go.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
The last item is the scheduling of two special meetings, which I believe we have the dates pinned down for water and for recodification.
Yeah, we had, we did do the doodle poll, it was actually for this week and next week, and next Thursday, October 3rd, I think was the date that everyone was available, trustee Levis had a could if needed. Within that period, and this week is obviously out, that was really the only date that did not have at least three, four, or more people not available. In discussing with Mr. Rothe, the, I think the recommendation is that the East Orange Water, while both matters are important, we need to get them addressed, East Orange Water is the more pressing of the two. So the recommendation is to schedule the East Orange Water for Thursday, October 3rd. I did want to get some consensus on time, 7:30, 7, 8, I don't know.
Like 7 to 9, is that a good block?
Well, I'm here anyway, so I'll be staying here from 4:30 on, so I don't know, I know trustee Rosner commutes and...
Early, 3, 6 there.
Can you do seven?
Where are we going to do the meeting?
That's an interesting question. We're going to have to sit here on October 3rd.
Yeah, we'll be here.
We'll be across the street. We'll pin down the location and notify everyone tomorrow. It'll be either across the street or potentially it's so back.
That's what I was asking. Let's do it, let's do it from 7 to 9, or 7 to 10, whatever it is.
7 till, whatever.
Okay.
Let's shoot for night.
All right, so I want to get that together and make sure we notice.
And then I will send out the poll again for the, probably the next two weeks, to hopefully pin down a date for the recodification.
Okay.
There was a reference earlier, and I don't know what the outcome of it was, whether there was another matter involving JAC, whether that could be piggybacked on...
Oh yeah, why don't we see if we can carve out 15 minutes, 20 minutes, or a half hour in the beginning of that to do that meeting, the JAC discussion.
Okay, on the 3rd, I'll, I'll see if Roger can come back.
See if they can do 7 o'clock. Okay.
If so, we will include that in the notice.
It's October 3rd. Right now, we only have a...
And collection.
Are there two dates, or just...
Just the October 3rd.
Just the one date, and we'll start with the JAC discussion.
We're going to do another poll for the following week, so that was really only the one date that had pretty much universal availability.
And the collection agency.
Okay. Oh yes, if he's getting Roger here.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other, is there anything that we need to discuss tonight?
Yes. A question, it was stated at the last regular meeting that we wouldn't be doing discussion items on regular meeting agendas. Those would be for conference agenda. Are we allowing discussion for both agendas? Because I didn't submit for...
I mean, we're trying to not do it the same way that we don't allow action on conference agendas, but we do have action, so...
It's just whatever way we go, I'm fine with it, but I didn't submit discussion items for this meeting because it was regular.
Yeah, they should be on conference agenda. I mean, we'll have, we'll probably have one or two on every meeting, but discussion items should be conference agenda, and action should be tonight. But it doesn't end up being 100% to 0, it ends up more like 8 to 20. So discussion items should be for conference agenda, and action should be for the regular meetings.
Yeah, and generally, unless there is a time sensitivity to the discussion, you know, if you have to do it because of a deadline or because of something, that should be the goal.
That's it. I move to adjourn.
Hey. Motion by trustee Calm to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor? All right, aye, aye, aye. Aye, aye, aye. Good night.
I adjourned at 10:00.